Good evening. Welcome to the Apex Planning Board meeting. Today is December 8th, 2025. I'll give you all a minute to get seated. Okay, I'd like to bow our heads and pray for a minute. Dear Father, I want to thank you for today and thank you for this opportunity for all of us as a community to gather and to discuss the things of the town that we are so blessed to live in. I ask, Lord, that you give us the wisdom to make the correct decisions for our town and help us and to guide us and lead us. This is in your son's name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, items of information. Understand this time, we do not have any new items that are outside of this agenda for today.
Outside the agenda, but these are items of information just to give folks a heads up. There's an upcoming Town Council Work Session item for Peak Plan 2055 and the Community Readiness Plan update and to listen on December 16th at 3:30 PM. Or you can attend in person, third floor Apex Town Hall. And then we did want to thank you for your service. Tim, you've been a longstanding planning board member and unfortunately we're seeing you term limited out, so this will be your last meeting, so we just wanted to say thank you for that. And then Amanda is here to do introductions.
Yes, so as y'all know, Kristi Yule joined the planning board last month and I have her bio for you. Just want to do the official introduction for her. She is the founder of Yule Consulting Group, a North Carolina-based real estate and land use consulting firm specializing in residential development strategy and market analysis. She brings more than 25 years of experience working with developers, municipalities, and civic leaders on land use, housing, and community planning. She holds a BA from the University of Georgia and is a licensed North Carolina real estate broker. Before starting her firm, she held leadership roles in real estate marketing and development strategy. She has served in senior volunteer and board roles with Urban Land Institute, Transforming Hope, the Abundance Foundation, and Second Bloom of Chatham County, and she and her family live in Apex's historic district. So that's the official welcome for Kristi. Thank you. And again, thank you, Tim, for your service.
Thank you. It's been an honor. Okay, before we get started, obviously due to the inclement weather that we have today, we're going to try to keep the meeting moving along as, you know, things get colder, roads could get ice here, so we're going to try to make sure we pay attention to that as well. So that said, if you have not already done so, over to your left, if you would like to sign in for any of the non-agenda items and agenda items for tonight and just during the public comment. The purpose of the public comment is to allow the public to speak on items that do not appear on this agenda. The members, any members of the public wishing to comment on public hearing items will be called to at an appropriate time later in the agenda. So we ask that you do please sign in. We like to keep all of our topics concise. We also want to make sure that we don't go longer than three minutes for any single person. But if there is one item on the agenda where we're going to have multiple speakers, we ask that you assign somebody who can speak and you can have nine minutes. That way it kind of keeps things together. And we also, if we can just keep things from being repetitive, we appreciate it. Okay, so let's go right into the consent agenda number one, which is the meeting minutes from the November 10th, 2025 regular meeting.
Tim, there is a non-agenda item on it. Public hearing.
Let's see here. Got it on our sheet here. I'm not seeing it. Okay, yes. Okay, Mr. Jeff Roach.
Mr. Chair, Jeff Roach, Peak Engineering and Design. I'm going to be real quick, guys. I just have a quick question for you. There is a new business item tonight, new business item number two, which is a UDO amendment coming up for temporary turnarounds. You guys will hear a presentation from staff. I am 100% in support of what's being requested, but I have two questions for it. One is a section under 7.2.1I4 which states any construct, sorry, and construction of any additional improvements required by the town at the time the road connection is made is a very broad statement, allows Apex to ask for anything of an adjacent development when they go to remove an old stub street. I'm just concerned about that language could be taken a lot farther than it's supposed to be. The other one is section 13.4, which is the definitions. It references the Town of Apex, a standard specification and details. At the latest planning committee meeting, there was a detail for a hammerhead that was proposed. It's not in the package tonight. I would ask that this UDO amendment be extended when it can be in conjunction with that detail so that the engineers can start using that at the same time and not get ahead of one another. So with that, I'll be brief. I appreciate the time, guys. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, are there any others for a public comment for items that are not on this agenda? Okay, at this point, I will close the public comment section and move on to our consent item, which is item number one, the meeting minutes from the November meeting. I'm assuming all of us have read. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Keith.
Second from Alyssa.
We have a second from Alyssa. All those who in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose. Yeah, motion carries. Okay, so we'll move this into our public hearing section. Public hearing has the same rules as the three minutes, so we'll carry on with that. We'll open this up into item number one. Ms. June calls with the public hearing, a possible motion regarding case 25CZ11, Castleberry Road.
Good afternoon, Chair and Planning Board members. This project is located in the northwestern area of town, near the Wake County and Chatham County line. South of Castleberry Road and Council Drive. The existing zoning district is Wake County Residential ADW and the proposed district is low-density residential conditional zoning. The current land use map shows as rural density residential. If the rezon is as proposed, is approved, then the land use map would change to low-density residential. And this parcel will require annexation at the time of the rezoning. The parcels include a single-family house and mature trees. And you can see there's an existing stream. The larger parcel appears two acres and then the small one is one acre. Castleberry Road is a North Carolina Department of Transportation road with an existing terminus of state maintenance at Sleepy Valley Road right here. So ends right there. And then Council, Castleberry Road from here on and then Council Drive are privately maintained roads. Neighborhood meetings were conducted on July 14th and November 17th, 2025. That's included in your packet. The Wake County public schools indicates elementary, middle, and high school within the current assignment area are anticipated to have insufficient capacity for future students. So transportation to schools outside of the current assignment should be anticipated. School expansion or construction within the next five years may address concerns for elementary, middle, and high school. So the proposed low-density residential conditional zoning conditions, the uses, single-family dwelling, accessory apartment utility, minor park, active-passive, and greenway. There were nine environmental conditions that were added. And these are similar to 75% native species for land state design, all garages wired with a 220 volt outlet. So all the zoning conditions are included in your staff report. And then the, another condition was the minimum lot size, 22,500 square feet. No more than four primary residential units within the two subject parcels, and that would be a 1.4 density. Construction restricted to Monday through Saturday, no later than 7:00 PM, and then construction vehicles shall not use Sleepy Valley Road. There's a 20-foot undisturbed type B landscape buffer along the eastern and southern boundary of the rezoned areas and then included setbacks. Installation of a six-foot privacy fence outside of the required landscape buffer adjacent to the neighboring residential land uses. And then there was a transportation condition, and that's to dedicate and construct Town of Apex Rural Residential Street with a sidewalk for Castleberry Road and Council Drive to the project boundary. And then there were eight architectural conditions. Those are also listed in your staff report. And due to the small area, the project was exempt from the Environmental Advisory Board, Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and Affordable Housing. So looking at the 2045 land use map, it's currently in rural density residential, and that's one dwelling unit per five acres. Now, the intention of the rural residential classification is to protect and enhance the rural character of the westernmost and southwestern portions of the Apex area. And the Peak Plan 2030 includes a goal for protection of environmental and natural resources and also the advanced Apex 2045 provided a principle to preserve rural character in this western portion of the study area. The subject site is located approximately 940 feet from this protected open space, which is a Jordan Lake Protected Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. The surrounding parcels south of Castleberry Road in the proximity to the project site are between one to five acres and densities less than one unit per acre. North of the project site, you can see on Castleberry Road, that is classified as low-density residential, and this is the Lake Castleberry subdivision. That also included a, limits the density to 1.28 units per acre. So under here is the corresponding densities for the land use classifications. Rural Transition Residential was added in June 2022. To be consistent with the surrounding parcel south of Castleberry Road and consistent with the Peak Plan 2030 goal and Apex Advance 2045 principle, staff recommends that the proposed project density be lowered. And planning staff recommends denial of rezoning 25CZ11 as proposed by the applicant. The applicant proposes a rezoning to low-density conditional zoning district with a maximum density of 1.4 units per acre, which is inconsistent with the rural density residential classification. Again, if the rezoning is approved, then the 2045 land use map classification would be amended to low-density residential. The proposed rezoning is not reasonable, not in the public interest, because the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood character as it includes a higher density and significantly smaller lot size. And with that, if you had any questions for staff, and then the applicant is here to do a small presentation and then answer any questions.
Thank you, June. Are there any questions for June? Okay, with that, the applicant would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. Will Norton, Jones &amp; Knossen Engineering, 221 North Salem Street here in downtown Apex. Thanks for hearing our rezoning application tonight. Thanks, June, for all your assistance in preparing this and also Nick Baker, who helped in the early stages of this with planning as well. Yeah, just wanted to add a couple of things. June pretty much hit all the highlights and most of it is in your staff report. It's a three-acre tract with two parcels of record. The minimum lot size being 22,500 square feet. If you see in your packet the rural transitional type of land use map designation, one per one acre. We've done a few of those projects here in town and this, this lot size is pretty consistent with what you would get in that, in that type of neighborhood. So I wanted to kind of throw that out there with this being what it is, a corner lot at the corner of Castleberry and Council. We would really only be subdividing the one, two-acre piece and then the one-acre piece would remain the same. It would just get annexed into the town is the goal. And so those lot sizes are more consistent with that type of zoning that you would see or land use map classification. And I can point to specific ones, but in general, that's about the parcel size that you would get. It's just in this one, with the parcel being so small, there's no need for streets and everything to use up more of that land. So the lot size minimum was brought forth as such. So the current zoning is R-ADW, just want to reiterate that. So if, if the parcel were to develop, there's an existing home on it right now, but it's not in good shape. So if the parcel were to develop as it was in the county and not get rezoned and annexed into the town, you know, there's two parcels of record, so a side setback would be 20 foot, a rear setback would be 30 foot, and a front corner would be 40 foot in the county if it were to develop as it is now and not be rezoned. So just want to reiterate that this would provide more of a buffer from the two neighbors as it is currently from a minimum setback standpoint where a house could go. So we're hopefully alleviating some of that from any potential house construction that could happen as a county development. June touched on some of the environmental conditions and just wanted to speak the one that we did have initially two of the proposed four maximum units being brought on with active solar. And we upped that to three to be proposed with active solar. So I wanted to just throw that out there that that did get added in. And a few of the neighbor conditions, such as the fence, got added in there as well. So thank y'all for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions for the applicant? I have one question for you. If you extrapolate out the size of the lots, what are realistically looking at how many homes?
The size of lots? So yeah, four, four units maximum. Yeah. So like the one, the one acre piece, which is the most southern, most part, that would stay as it is. And then the two-acre piece would get divvied up into a maximum of three at the end of the day. So the two-acre piece into three. So you're roughly looking at about 30,000 square foot lots if they were all to be equal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Will. At this time, we'll open up the public comment section for this rezoning case. I have a Tom Kendall. Would you like to come on up? You could just state your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Tom Kendig. My wife Karen and I reside at 409 Sleepy Valley Road. We and our neighbors here this evening, most of whom are all a part of the Sleepy Valley Rural Residential Community. And we appreciate this opportunity to express our concerns about this development. We are a tight-knit, long-standing rural residential community. Many of us have lived there for decades. We care for and watch over each other's properties. We celebrate birthdays, anniversaries, and sometimes just the joy of gathering. We recognize our children's volleyball and soccer successes. And for years, we would gather at, in early February, at one of our neighbor's houses to celebrate her birthday. We did that every year until she turned 102. For her 103rd, we had to go to a nearby assisted living home. She almost made it to her 104th. Our kids used to ride a tractor-drawn hay wagon to go house to house for Halloween trick-or-treating. That's no longer feasible with the new nearby subdivisions and the density that they have. We can't compete with that anymore. Our 12 properties are in large lots ranging from two to 21 acres with an average of about six. Several are actually in Chatham County. Our neighborhood adjoins and is surrounded by the U.S. Corps of Engineers property associated with the White Oak Creek, Flood Plain, and ultimately Jordan Lake. And further down that stream is, of course, the intake for your water and Kerry's water supply. The core land is leased as wildlife game lands and it's teeming with wildlife, including up until this past year a nesting pair of eagles that had a nest kind of just down Sleepy Valley, at the end of Sleepy Valley Road. Most of us are in Wake County and currently under the county's jurisdictions where we are zoned R-ADW, allowing one house per two acres. The Town of Apex's 2045 plan calls for the The town of Apex's 2045 plan calls for the area to remain rural residential with a zoning of one house for every five acres. This proposed development with its low-density zoning is considerably higher density than our existing rural community and much higher than what's called for in the town's land use plan. This type of urban development, we believe, is inconsistent with our current land uses and inconsistent with the town's adopted land use plan. While we have watched and continue to watch increasing development all around us, this will be the first urban intrusion into our, into the heart of our rural community. If approved, this will make it difficult to maintain our rural character for which we, which we desire and which the town calls for in the plan. This seemingly small encroachment into our rural community will set our neighborhood on a path toward decline. We urge you to honor the wishes of our community and follow the recommendations of your staff and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Eddie Wasdell. And Eddie, do you speak alone, or do you speak for a group?
I mean, I speak for all of us.
Okay, are there multiples and you're speaking?
I'm the last one, yes, sir.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts on the matter at hand. My name is Eddie Wasdell. I reside at 812 Wasdell Way and have been a lifelong resident of Sleepy Valley Community. While I get to the present, I need to take you on a quick journey back in time. I'll try my best to keep my emotions under control. Mom and dad purchased our original acreage in 1977, and I was born three years later. I grew up riding four-wheelers on the old railroad bed that y'all most likely only know is the American Tobacco Trail. Remember Blue Road and Castleberry Road were gravel? Heck, Highway 64 was two lanes. Back then, our community of rural residents stretched all the way to the end of Castleberry Road. I learned to ride my bike without training wheels at a small house with the most beautiful oak trees on Castleberry Road. There are now three homes haphazardly placed on that piece of land, no oak trees and major traffic hazards. The house with the pool where I learned how to swim is now gone, gobbled up by the Lake Castleberry subdivision with 147 homes. We fought against that rezoning and obviously lost. Dad always told me that as soon as water and sewer could be run to the pond, what we call Lake Castleberry, there would be a neighborhood there. Unfortunately, his foresight was spot-on, and even if he were still with us, he would not be able to take his grandchildren fishing at the pond he spent so much time on. I have been unbelievably lucky to raise my kids in this special place. I will say that seeing the pain on my daughter's face and trying to answer questions about why they cut all the trees down for the Lake Castleberry subdivision was difficult. As I speak, the land for Castleberry Reserve is being cleared to allow for another 170 homes. I imagine goes without saying that our community of rural residents no longer stretches to the end of Castleberry Road. It now ends at the intersection of Castleberry Road and Sleepy Valley Road, or maybe a better description would be where the pavement ends. I do not believe I am exaggerating. I say we live in a rural sanctuary where large lots and friendly neighbors provide insulation for the suburban sprawl that has been creeping in. The peace and tranquility here while we all live in Sleepy Valley, this project, if approved by the board, would severely disrupt the defining characteristics of our community, wooded lots of two acres or more where you can barely even see your neighbors, allowing for total privacy. Frank and Alita O'Norris have watched me grow up and are now watching my children grow up. They are the first house to generate a rural community would be subject to increased traffic in front of their house, making their daily walks around their property more dangerous. Garrett and Christina McAllister are the second house, and arguably be the most impacted by this proposed development. They would have two lots and houses boarding their property, and traffic from all four houses will pass by their home. They have created a beautiful area for their myriad of farm animals and allow their fowl to free range across Sleepy Valley in the gravel section where Castleberry Road ends. This proposed development would not only ruin their idyllic setting, but also endanger their animals, and in all fairness, them and their daughters. How so, you may be wondering? Part of this proposal is a paved the end of Castleberry Road, which runs past McAllister's property. Paved roads bring more traffic and people driving faster and faster. Carrie and Trish McPherson are the other community members who will be most directly impacted. They have spent three decades cultivating a botanical oasis. The proposed development puts a lot with a house on the northern border of their property and creates, not improves, a paved road council drive to the corner of their property, destroying their privacy. Council drive is not currently a road on the land in question. It is a beautiful wooded easement where hawks nest and many other animals live. Clearing this land and putting in a paved road is completely against the character of our neighborhood. If this road is created, it also opens the possibility of future development even closer to the Jordan Lake watershed. Given the current issues Fugitive Arena is facing with their water supply, it seems prudent to do everything possible to protect Apex's water supply. Please advise proposal and let our rural residential haven live on where the pavement ends. Could all my neighbors in opposition to this Castleberry annexation development please stand up? Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, are there any others who have not signed up yet but would like to speak on this rezoning? Okay, seeing there are none, I will close then the public comment section for this rezoning. I will say we did receive a lot of email feedback. We really do appreciate everyone in the community reaching out and just kind of letting us know your thoughts and feelings as to what's going on. I'd like to bring this back to the board with any type of comments and questions that
Well, I appreciate all the letters that you sent in. We really, that is impactful. That is what we want to hear when we are looking at those sides of this and we're reading the reports. So we do appreciate that you shared that information. So thank you. How, how is this even happening right now? Did someone sell?
John Powell passed away.
Okay, so it's, was, okay, all right, just trying to see how the idyllic has suddenly been, okay, all right. Thank you for that. Thank you. Just a piece of information I needed in there.
Any other questions or comments? Any discussion?
Well, I will say I did grow up in Green Level. Lake Castleberry was called Grandma's Pond back then, if I think you're, a friend of mine's family owned the Chatham County side. And man, the memories we've had down there. It is a wonderful community, and I will say that. It is, I've been there a long time, too, and it's, I just can't get behind this one. I will have to admit it, it just doesn't fit, in my opinion. In my opinion, with the, with the watershed and the neighborhood, it just doesn't fit the character.
Can staff add any information about any transportation improvements along Castleberry if there are any, if there's anything planned? I know that something that comes before this board regularly as we hear requests along this road is major concern for traffic and speed with it being a two-lane. So is there, are there any NC DOT improvements proposed? No, that's something, okay, no. I'm seeing staff shaking their head.
Any other discussion?
I have one question that I just, I have a hard time getting my head around this, just like Mr. Brazwell does. So, and June might be able to answer this, but is, is Castleberry in front of this property and then council, as I'm reading in here, are those going to then truly be paved?
What the rezoning conditions included?
Yes, yeah, so Castleberry would be paved all the way to the end, and then council would then become a paved road as well.
Correct. That's what the applicant is proposing.
Would that then be owned by the town of Apex? Would that be a town of Apex road, or would it be, would it defer over to a DOT road?
It would be a town of Apex. Where state maintenance ends, just where county.
Yeah, typically on that question, DOT would expect us to accept maintenance of extensions of those types of roadways. They don't typically expect, accept maintenance of those lower-type facilities. We could certainly have a conversation with them, but if we, if we wanted DOT to take it over, but in either case, it's, our minimum requirement is that 22-foot edge-to-edge rural residential section, which would, should meet DOT standards as well in the event that they would be willing to take it over.
Thank you. My take on this, it seems like in this area where you have a very established, well-connected neighborhood of people who have lived there for generations, when you come in with something like this, and it seems like kind of a subdivision kind of plopped into the middle of an area that just doesn't really relate to anything else. To me, it seems to be a little bit more disruptive to the characteristics of the surrounding areas. I don't think that it really protects the rural characteristics of the neighboring property owners. And for that reason, I can't get behind this one as well.
I just think that much, that much pavement for three houses in the middle of a rural neighborhood that always had gravel road, just, it's like putting a square peg in a round hole to me.
At the locate, yeah, the location, you're correct. The location having to do with, at the very end of Councilberry, dirt road surrounded by game lands, which, which is a water spot, as you know, and I would have to agree of the current.
Is that a motion?
So based off of that, I'd like to make a motion to deny rezoning case 25 CZ 111 at Castleberry Road.
Do we have a motion for denial? Do we have a second?
Second from Christie.
A second from Christie. Okay, all those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Motion carries.
So Chair Royal, we do need to go through each of the legislative considerations, and Amanda will go through those with you. You do need to state your reasons why it's not consistent.
Okay, so for each one, tell me, we need to agree whether it's consistent or inconsistent, and if inconsistent, state why. The first is consistency with the 2045 land use plan.
Inconsistent.
Okay. And that's because it's currently designated as rural density residential? Okay. Compatibility of the appropriateness of the proposed location and compatibility with the character of the surrounding land uses. Zoning district supplemental standards, the conditional zoning district uses compliance with Section 4.4 if applicable. And not all have to be inconsistent.
Yeah, it sounds like that one's consistent.
That one was consistent.
Okay. Design minimizes adverse impact on, visual impacts on the proposed use on adjacent lands and avoidance of significant adverse impacts on surrounding land uses, lands regarding trash, traffic, service delivery, parking and loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration, and not creating a nuisance. And can you explain the adverse impact?
The adverse impact is, you know, given the size of the buffer versus the size of the lots for adjacent properties.
Okay. Design minimizes environmental impact, and the proposed conditional zoning district's use minimization of environmental impacts and protection from significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources.
It says inconsistent, given its location next to the Jordan Lake watershed.
Okay. Number six, the proposed conditional zoning district uses avoidance of having adverse impacts on public facilities and services, including roads, potable water, and wastewater facilities, parks, schools, police, fire, and EMS facilities.
See that being as consistent, I mean, it's, the other neighborhoods are already there. I don't know that it's not any much more of a burden to the town, but.
Yeah, it's an additional road to take over, but that's not inconsistent.
Okay. The proposed district's uses, the proposed district uses affect on the health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the town or its ETJ. What was that? I didn't hear.
I was saying consistent.
Consistent, okay. Whether the district's use is substantially detrimental to adjacent properties.
Is detrimental, so is that inconsistent?
Detrimental would be inconsistent. Whether the district constitutes a nuisance or hazard due to traffic impact or noise, or because of the number of persons who will be using the district use.
Say it's consistent, given its, this total number of homes, but it's more, more or less a location issue.
Okay. And the last one is whether it complies with all standards imposed on it by other applicable provisions of the ordinance for use, layout, and general development characteristics.
I would say that would be consistent with standard development, but it's just on location.
I have everything we need.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number two. June also here again with a possible motion regarding rezoning case 25 ZZ 13, which is 2224 New Hill Olive Chapel Road.
Right, it's, this project's located in the southwest area of town. It is west of New Hill Olive Chapel Road and near the Jordan Manor subdivision. So the existing zoning district is Wake County Residential 40W, so orange area, and the brownish area is Wake County Residential 80W. The proposed zoning district is low-density conditional zoning. The existing land use map is low-density residential. It is consistent with this, the proposed rezon's consistent with the classification. The property is 4.8 acres and includes residential house, some mature trees. Neighborhood meeting were conducted August 12th and November 6th, 2025. Wake County Public School indicates the elementary, middle, and high-grade levels within the current assignment area are anticipated to have insufficient capacity for future students. School expansion or construction within the next five years is not anticipated to address concerns. The applicant is requesting the proposed rezoning to connect to town services due to a well failure. So they're not proposing any new development at this time. And they're proposing the zoning conditions, which are included in your staff report, accessory apartment, single-family, botanical garden. Couple use conditions, the property shall be served by the one driveway from New Hill Olive Chapel Road, which is existing. Front yard setback from New Hill Olive Chapel Road shall be a minimum of 60 feet from the right-of-way as of the date of the rezoning. Future development shall include right-of-way dedication consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan, and any future development shall be limited to maximum residential density of two dwelling units per acre. And due to the small area, the project was exempt from Environmental Advisory Board, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and Affordable Housing. With that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning at 2224 New Hill Olive Chapel Road with the conditions offered by the applicant. And the proposed rezoning is low-density residential conditional zoning. That is consistent with the low-density residential land use map classification. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow the existing single-family residential to be consistent with the surrounding area. In addition, the proposed rezoning will allow the property to connect to town water and sewer services. And if you have any questions, staff's here to answer them.
Thank you, June. We appreciate it. Any other questions for June? Is the applicant here would like to speak?
I have nothing further to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir. I'll open up public comment if there is any. Do we have any signed up?
We all signed up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section, bring us back to board to discussion. So it seems pretty straightforward. We have somebody whose well has gone dry and needs to tap onto the city to allow for continuation of being able to habitat the home. Inhabit the home.
And assuming with this rezoning, they are subsequently doing a two-unit per acre? As if I'm mistaken. Well, when the well goes dry. Seems straightforward to me.
Okay. Is that a motion?
We will make a motion to approve rezoning case 25 CZ 1-3, New Hill Olive Chapel Road.
Okay, we have a motion from Keith.
One second.
A second from Jeff. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Hopefully you get your water soon. Yes, sir. Okay, up next, item number three. Joshua with the public hearing, a possible motion regarding case CZ 25 16, which is the 55 Auto Group.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Joshua Killian here to present rezoning case 25 CZ 16, 3521 Old US 1, also known as 55 Auto Group. This rezoning is located in the New Hill community of Apex. The rezoning is only effective for 0.53 acres of the total parcel. This map here shows that the parcel is currently split zoned. The subject area, the area subject to this rezoning is currently zoned neighborhood commercial conditional zoning, whereas the remainder of the parcel to the east, so this side here, is low-density conditional zoning with a single-family home on the same parcel. The land to the south is zoned Wake County R 30. To the west is neighborhood commercial conditional zoning. The zoning to the north across Old US 1 is Wake County Highway Commercial. The applicant is proposing to rezone the parcel to planned commercial conditional zoning for the purpose of operating a vehicle dealer's office. The applicant has offered conditions to limit the extent of the intended primary use, and that primary use would be vehicle sales and rental light as defined in the UDL. The applicant held neighborhood meetings on September 3rd and November 13th, 2025, and those packets are included in your staff report. And this rezoning was exempt from meeting with the Environmental Advisory Board per the UDL. The 2045 land use map identifies this parcel as office employment, commercial services, and the proposed zoning district is consistent with that land use classification. Planning staff recommends approval of 25 CZ 16 with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest as the proposed zoning district and conditions allow the property to be used in a manner consistent with its original use and accommodate growth in economy consistent with that contemplated in the 2045 land use map. Have any questions? I'm here to answer, and the applicant is also here for any questions.
Okay.
And has no presentation, so just questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Joshua? I have one question in regards to lighting. I'm assuming this is not going to be like a standard car dealership of, we're gonna have a nighttime lighting?
Yeah, there. Hi, I'm Jason East. I'm an agent for 55 Auto Group. There'll be no changes whatsoever to the building, lighting, painting, anything, so business operates online sales, so majority gets done by appointment only and so you won't even know driving by that there's really even, you know, vehicles sold out of there. Out of that particular building, we're only gonna use a 10 by 10 office and yeah, it's just, we've been doing it for a while and it's worked for past 15 years, so.
Question for staff, is that something that a vehicle sales lot, is that something where is there, is there some type of condition that would normally allow lighting that we would have to exclude that?
So, for something like this, if it were to redevelop or to further develop, if they propose more than two lights, then it would require a lighting plan, they would have to meet the UDL.
Okay.
So.
And right now, it's set where it's an eight-vehicle max, so there won't be more ever than eight vehicles on the property for sale, so.
Okay.
I'm assuming the 10 by 10 office is some sort of requirement by DOT for automotive sales?
It is, it is. And if, I don't know if y'all have ever been in the old gas station there in New Hill, it's the bait shop section. So Jack, the owner of the property, he'll still keep his vehicles and stuff inside the building and we're just gonna have a little small desk portion in there, so.
Okay, any other questions for Joshua or the applicant? Do we have a presentation, Mr. East, or no?
I don't.
Okay. All right.
I'll sell you a car when you're ready.
Okay.
I would like to add just one more piece of context. Recently, the North Carolina DOT and DMV have been requiring all dealerships to verify that their office is allowed where it is. So this helps codify when he begins the business in this location that when he goes to get the letter from the town, that it states everything that it needs to state for him to operate it.
That was gonna be my question. It sounds like this is just cleaning up an existing operation.
It's not an existing operation as of today, but just moving forward, so, I mean, I mean, even Hendrick had to get a letter that specifically said vehicle sales is required, even though we all see the Hendrick site and would assume that it's already allowed, so.
Very good. Okay, any other questions for the applicant or for? All right, so at this point, we'll open up any public comment. Seeing on our list here is blank, we don't have anybody here for public comment. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring us back to the board for discussion. Straightforward? Okay. All right, so is that a motion?
Yes.
All right, so Christie with the motion.
A motion that we approve, case 25 CZ 1-6. Attic Burrows, Christie.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alyssa has a second. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, motion carries.
What was the, what was the first and second?
Christie and Alyssa, first and second.
First is Christie, second is Alyssa.
Mr. Chair, can I request recusal for public hearings number four, five, six? And new business item number one?
Yes. Okay, we'd like to recuse board member Alyssa, items four, five, six, and new business item number one. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay. All right, so up next is item number four, which is Shannon Cox with the Long Range Planning Manager for the Amendments to the Bike and Pedestrian Plan related to Veridia.
Who motioned and seconded to recuse Alyssa?
So we did a Christie, did we do a Christie? No, I'm sorry. Did we do a?
I didn't, but I can.
I make the motion. It's Mary. I make the motion.
Okay, Mary's making the motion.
And a second.
Five, six, and item number one, new business.
All right, we'll redo that. So we have
Mary.
Mary as first, Jeff as a second. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Thank you, apologize. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four. Shannon Cox with the Amendments to the Bike and Pedestrian Plan for Veridia.
Yes, thank you. And so this is the first of three public hearings that are related to Veridia. And so as is typical, we just encourage you to have the public hearing for each item, but hold off on voting until you've heard all three and have all the information. So this first amendment is for, the first public hearing is for proposed amendments to both the thoroughfare and collector street plan map and the bicycle and pedestrian system plan map. So this exhibit is showing the thoroughfare map. Just to orient you, this is US 1 across the top, 540 and NC 55. This is future Jesse Drive, kind of running through the center of this area, and most of the land area here is part of Veridia. There are some minor adjustments to the transportation plan, so I'll start with those. The first is adjusting the approach of Veridia Parkway as it approaches US 1 as well as the extension of future Jupiter Creek Drive, a major collector street. This is really to improve the curvature of the roadway and the site distance at the intersection. The second minor change is an adjustment to the future alignment of Jesse Drive, so this is where it's shown on our adopted plan now, and it would be aligned slightly further south. This is again to improve the curvature of this future roadway. It actually improves the stream crossings, so we see that is beneficial. And it's consistent with the plans within Veridia. The more significant amendment is at the intersection of Veridia Parkway and future Jesse Drive. Based on our adopted plan, if somebody was going along Veridia Parkway from the south, the through movement would be to head toward 55. So they wouldn't need to make any turns. They were coming from 540 along Veridia Parkway to get to 55. The proposed amendment is to actually keep the through movement in the north-south direction, so Veridia Parkway, the through movement would be toward US 1. If somebody wanted to get onto Jesse Drive, they would need to make a turn. The reason for this proposed change is because updated traffic impact analysis, including the North Carolina Children's Hospital, shows that the left turn movements with our adopted plan alignment would overwhelm this intersection. There would be an estimated 13 vehicles making a turn during the morning peak hour and over 500 in the afternoon. With these changes, there would be less than 300 in each direction, and so the intersection will function better. Because of the alignment change, we also needed to look at the future alignment of, this is Technology Drive Extension. The adopted plan would have that intersection too close to Jesse and Veridia Parkway, so we have proposed to shift that further east. I do want to note here that with our comprehensive plan that's underway, we do want to take a closer look at this major collector street. There's a stream crossing here that's really outside of the amendment area, so with the peak plan, we'll see if we can actually align this even further east. But that involves property outside of Veridia, so we wanted to do it through that comprehensive plan process. The next amendments for this item are for our bicycle and pedestrian system plan map. So, again, in the same area, the purple dashed line that you see marked out along Veridia Parkway represents proposed side path, so that's basically a wide sidewalk, typically asphalt, adjacent to a roadway behind the curb. The blue dashed lines shown here along Veridia Parkway are proposed bicycle lanes. We're actually proposing to remove the side path from Veridia Parkway, and that's because of input that we've received from the North Carolina Department of Transportation that they both prefer a separated bicycle facility for a four-lane thoroughfare like this will be. And they are not supportive of on-street bicycle lanes if a separated facility is provided. So those increased maintenance costs, increased pavement, it's not something that they're supportive of. Based on the public input we received during the development of Bike Apex, our comprehensive bicycle plan, staff don't agree that a side path provides the same function as a bicycle lane because on a side path, both pedestrians and bicycles would be using the same facility together. So working with the Veridia team and CDOT and staff, we do have a different design than we've used elsewhere in Apex where if you're looking at this proposed street section, instead of the side path, we would have five-foot sidewalk. Then there would be a two-foot grass strip and a six-foot bicycle path with another separation of grass strip and curb before the roadway. And that would be used on both the, excuse me, the three-lane and four-lane section. And that would fit within the planned right of way for both of those facilities. So we're still, this is still called a bicycle lane, it's a separated bicycle lane, so we don't need to change the plan, but it affects the design in this location. So for both the thoroughfare and collector street plan amendments, as well as the bicycle and pedestrian system plan map amendments, planning staff are supportive, transportation, infrastructure and development staff are supportive. It's also been reviewed with police, fire, parks and rec, and water resources. The only concern is that one stream crossing that I mentioned, and we'll be looking at that through a future potential plan update with the peak plan. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
One quick question, and this is, on Veridia, they are proposing the sidewalk and the asphalt bike path on both sides?
Yes. Yes, that's right. So bicycles would travel similarly as if it was an on-street bicycle lane. It would be, you know, one direction as with the flow of traffic on each side.
We'll agree it's not the best street for that with DOT, I would, that's the hospital, the traffic anticipated, I would assume is gonna be high.
Is this a requirement to have the bicycle path? Or is this something that's just?
It is on our bicycle pedestrian plan map, and so to be consistent with the adopted transportation plan, it's required.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, I'm just thinking that the habits of people walking on the sidewalk and having a two-foot, there's not a great separation, kind of like with, you know, where you have curb and gutter and then, you know, no one wants to walk next to the road, so they stay out, naturally out of the bike lane that's on the road.
Yep.
I don't know if anybody's gonna stay out of the bike lane that's essentially another sidewalk.
Typically, they're marked with, you know, a bicycle a bicycle actually on the asphalt itself. I have seen them in other places and they are used as they're supposed to be, but this will be new in Apex, this would be the first one. So I think there probably will be a learning curve.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Shannon?
Thanks.
Okay, so we're gonna hold off on any type of voting on this one until we hear item number six.
You need to open the public hearing, though.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up public, okay. Do we have any one here in the public to wish to speak on items number four or five? Do we have anybody signed up?
No, it was actually just four, I think.
Okay, just number four. Okay. Okay, seeing that we have none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Okay, and we will not take a vote on this, so we'll bring it right back to item number five, Ms. Shannon Cox again for the Amendments to the Apex Transportation Transit Plan, rather.
Okay, thank you. These are amendments to the Transit Plan Map, and these are proposed by staff, but they are associated with Veridia. So to orient you, um, we're looking a little bit further out here. Um, the, the first proposed amendment is to remove the future commuter rail spur planned from, uh, downtown Apex. This is fifty-five. Um, utilizing the, um, rail corridor adjacent to South Salem Street until about Pleasant Plains Elementary, where it would then, um, cross new land area where there's currently no railroad into Veridia. So removing that, um, new rail spur as well as the, um, rail and bus transit center that's proposed within Veridia, um, and this is within the North Carolina Children's Hospital planned area. There's a few reasons for this. Um, the com- commitments, the zoning commitments for Veridia include a commitment to reserve land area for future regional rail. If that regional rail system is not funded by 2035, then that land area reservation is null. The Capital Area M P O, um, in 2025 completed a regional rail investment study. And that investment study was intended to identify region-wide what rail projects would, could be strategically funded. Um, this project was in the pool for consideration, and it was identified as not a candidate for federal funding. So it actually didn't even make it into the recommendations. Um, and I would say there's really no likelihood of this receiving federal or regional funding by the 2035 timeline. Um, Campo did prepare for us a high-level planning cost estimate for what it would take um, to build this rail system, and their estimate was, uh, sixty-three million dollars. So that's something that we really would need federal or regional support to make happen. Um, we do think that's probably a low estimate, given that it doesn't, uh, consider, you know, the site-specific aspects that a design would. In addition, um, there's no commitments in place for rail reservation in this area between South Salem and US one. Um, this would introduce railroad into a new area where there's currently no trains, and that comes with some negatives like noise, vibration, and the difficulty of crossing railroads with roads, bike, pet features. Finally, when this was, um, included on our Transit Plan Map, the idea for the region was light rail, which has very frequent service, and that's really no longer a reality for our region, so there would be must, much less frequent service expected with a commuter rail tr- transportation. We are recommending that we add a bus transit center, um, in this location, which is much closer to the fifty-five corridor and adjacent to, uh, where the Wake Technical Community College is proposed. That, uh, bus transit center is also adjacent to proposed Go Apex Route Three, which is this, um, thick blue and white line. It's adjacent to Go Triangle Route Three oh five and to future local transit proposed to use, uh, Jesse Drive and Veridia Parkway. So we do think that bus transit center, um, is an appropriate, um, way to plan on serving transit in this area. Um, staff do recommend these changes. Uh, there were no concerns from, uh, transportation, infrastructure and development, Parks and Rec, Water Resources, Police or Fire, and Go Triangle also expressed support for the bus transit center in this location. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shannon. Any questions for Ms. Shannon? Okay, I'd like to open up public comments for this item, item number five. Has anybody signed up for item number five? All right, seeing we have none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the board. Any questions for Ms. Shannon before we move on? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to item number six. Amanda, with the public hearing, possible motion regarding case twenty-five C Z eighteen, the Veridia S D Plan Amendments.
Okay, so we all know where Veridia is at this point. Okay, so this, uh, rezoning is an amendment to the S D Plan standards for all of Veridia, including the recent rezonings to incorporate additional land area, um, into the development. Um, the entire area is currently zoned sustainable development conditional zoning. Um, and the proposed rezoning is consistent with the twenty forty-five land use map, which designates the area as regional mixed-use. The applicant held their, uh, neighborhood meetings on September twenty-ninth and November ten. Uh, just a little bit of history about the Veridia S D Plan. It was, uh, both the district and the U D O and the zoning for Veridia was approved in May of two thousand and eleven. The environmental enhancement plan was adopted in February two thousand and twenty-three, and the pattern book was adopted in August twenty twenty-four before development commenced as required by the S D Plan. And there have been four rezonings since that initial approval to add properties to the assemblage. Um, after the announcement that Veridia was selected as the site for the proposed North Carolina Children's Hospital, the S D Plan was evaluated to determine amendments necessary to accommodate a very, uh, to, excuse me, to accommodate a large hospital campus and provide desired flexibility to certain standards throughout the remainder of Veridia. The amendments are broken up into two parts, Part One and Part Two. Part One relates only to the North Carolina Children's Hospital campus, and that's shown in blue on the screen here. The Part Two amendments apply to anywhere in Veridia. So I'm going to summarize the amendments for, that apply only to the hospital campus. Uh, the first is a modification that the responsible party, uh, which is the developer, uh, does not have to provide a written statement indicating approval of any site plan or subdivision plans submitted on the, uh, hospital campus. The second change is an exemption from the energy efficiency goal. Within the S D Plan, there are just a series of goals without standards. The environmental enhancement plan, which we'll talk about later, has the specific standards. Uh, the third is an exemption or modifications to certain design standards. Um, this is, this is new terminology. A-grid standards within the Veridia Plan refer to pedestrian-oriented areas. The design standards are intended to encourage a more pedestrian-oriented environment, and B-grid zones, which are vehicle-oriented, um, areas. Uh, and then other design standards, um, including lot width, block perimeter, rear loading, uh, location of parking and entrances. And this is to provide, uh, the needed design flexibility to accommodate the campus that's envisioned. And then finally, with the removal of the rail and bus transit center location from the Transit Plan that Shannon just talked about, uh, we have worked with the, um, developer, and they have added a requirement to provide four bus stops uh, with certain amenities located west of Veridia Parkway and within a quarter mile of a healthcare building. And so the intent of this is to ensure that this area does remain transit-supportive. Are there any questions on the amendments to Part One? Okay. Part Two applies to the remainder of Veridia. And these include, um, the elimination of references to rail and the land reservation for future, um, land dedication. This is, um, supported by the Transit Plan Amendments that Shannon just presented. The next is a modification to the standard related to Perry Road at US one. The current requirement is that, um, is for the construction of an interchange before fifty percent of any land use allowed within, um, Veridia is constructed. And those land uses are divided up into residential, office-industrial, or retail. The hospital use is considered a civic use, so it does not contribute toward office maximums. And that goes into the, uh, next standard is an exemption for any hospital, hospital-related use from the maximum authorized development. Um, and again, this is just codifying the interpretation that staff is making. Hospitals listed under the civic use, civic use section in the S D Plan. So, um, this is just codifying that. The next, uh, exemption is from the development, uh, thresholds in Section four-point-two-point-four of the S D Plan. And this is really, um, standards to ensure a mix of uses would occur in Veridia. Let me get to my notes. Uh, when Veridia was proposed, staff and town council wanted to ensure a mix of uses would be constructed, which led to these thresholds. Uh, to date, uh, plans for over thirteen hundred residential units and over two hundred thousand square feet of industrial space have been approved. And in addition, plans for more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail and office space have been proposed. Considering this and the size of the future Wake Tech campus and the hospital campus, staff can support the removal of, uh, these current thresholds. Any questions on these proposed changes so far? Okay. Uh, the last two, um, amendments are related to, uh, a requirement, in addition to require the construction of a bus transit center. And this is, again, related to the removal of the rail, um, reservation. Most of that, which, uh, Shannon covered, so staff worked with the applicant to, um, doesn't, find a location within Veridia for a bus transit center, which, um, has been identified here, and this exhibit is referenced in the proposed amendments. So the bus transit center would be located between, um, Adesso Boulevard and Forest Lightway. And just to orient you where we are in the overall Veridia development, this is future Adesso Boulevard here, and Forest Lightway is where the light at Technology and Fifty-five is located, so that would become Forest Lightway. And so the bus transit center, um, would be in this general vicinity. And just to orient you to what's happening on this map, the yellow indicates approved subdivision plans for Lennar with their townhomes, uh, condos and, uh, some single-family, which does not show on this screen. Multi-family apartments, which have been approved, and we've had a groundbreaking for. Uh, the office and retail that's, uh, being reviewed currently is shown in this location in red. Uh, the Wake Tech campus is just off the page to the south, south of Forest Lightway, and relocated Technology Drive. There's also an underpass under Forest Lightway, which is a four-lane median-divided, uh, thoroughfare. And so there would actually be an underpass for pedestrians to go from the campus, um, north into the retail area and to the, the bus transit center. And then the future extension of Jesse Drive is seen in this location. Um, and then the last change is a modification to the specific recreation requirements in, um, in the S D Plan. In two thousand and eleven, the town and the developer worked out recreation requirements that the town needed at that time, softball fields, tennis courts, um, a community center and a dog park. There's other requirements for open space within the Veridia S D Plan beyond that. Uh, since that time, things have changed. We now have Pleasant Park, which has a lot of these amenities, including future baseball, softball fields, and as well as multipurpose fields, a variety of courts, um, and a cross-country course. So the, uh, developer has worked with staff and is proposing a public access easement in the area of the Stormwater Park, which is a large area in this location, uh, and along the Linear Park, which is just, I guess, on the east side of, uh, Jesse Drive here. And the developer will work, shall work collaboratively with the town to program this space as well. So there'll be an opportunity to have programming, um, in this space in addition to the public access easement, so to be open to everyone. Uh, in addition, the developer has committed to constructing a twenty-five thousand square foot programmable recreation center at its cost, uh, located, um, within this general area and near the bus transit center. And there are thresholds and timing, um, standards for when the site plan for the recreation center has to be submitted and constructed, and this will all involve a developer agreement that will have to be approved by town council for all the details to be worked out. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, uh, uh, met on October twenty-ninth and voted unanimously to approve a recommendation that park staff continue to work through the specifics of the proposed amendments as we've begun to get to this point. Uh, this rezoning was exempt from meeting with the Environmental Advisory Board. Um, planning staff is recommending approval of the, uh, rezoning with the conditions as offered by the applicant. Uh, the rezoning is consistent with the twenty forty-five land use map, and it's reasonable and in the public interest because it recognizes changes needed due to conditions that have changed since two thousand and eleven, will provide the flexibility and design standards needed to construct the proposed North Carolina Children's Hospital campus, and require the developer for the remainder of Veridia to provide indoor and outdoor recreation space and a bus transit center. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Amanda. Questions for Amanda?
I have one question, though, to clarify. First of all, thank you, staff and, and, um, and R X R for working, obviously, a lot of work has gone into this, and the recreation. Talking about some fields here, or, or, you said twenty-five thousand square foot building, is that correct?
This is an indoor facility that will be programmable, um, with, um, things to include, um, I have this in my notes, um, adaptive classrooms, programming, gymnasium, camp spaces, and support spaces like office, storage, restrooms, and things that, you know, um, so just additional facility. Our community center here is booked up. If you've ever had a child or used space yourself, you know it's, it's booked. And so this would provide additional programming opportunity, and this is an area on the Parks Recreation Master Plan that was identified as a target search area for indoor recreation, um, facility.
Fantastic. Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, would the applicant like to speak?
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group. Excited to be here tonight, uh, on behalf of R X R Realty, as well as the North Carolina Children's Hospital. I, I think what has happened over the course of the last several years with R X R having acquired Veridia, uh, has, you know, I think we all kind of waited, and I worked with the prior owners of, of Veridia, and when R X R came to town, they had a vision for what could be of, of Veridia. And Veridia had kind of sat stale, hadn't moved, it was stagnated. I think it was a, a, it was really a hole in kind of what the town was looking for, what the region was looking for. And R X R didn't just come in and breathe life into it. I think R X R, even before the Children's Hospital opportunity came to the town and came to R X R, uh, had really started to transform and continues to transform what Veridia can be and, and to push the boundaries of the imagination that could go into making Veridia the type of mixed-use development that it was intended to be all along and then some. Obviously, the North Carolina Children's Hospital is a transformative project, not just for this property, not just for these owners, but for the region, and candidly, for the state a- and globally. It will be a globally recognized hospital, and you hear about that momentarily from Simon George, uh, with North Carolina Children's. It's a, it's a dynamite opportunity, uh, and I think, you know, I speak for, on behalf of the entire group, when I tell you we're all excited about it. Uh, momentarily, I'm going to hand it off to Joe Graziosi with R X R, as well as Simon George on behalf of North Carolina Children's to speak briefly, and then I'm going to walk through kind of after them the, the changes. But before I do, I do want to, as you know, Mr. Braz, well, there's been a ton of time put on, put in on this, uh, development, these, these plans that are before you tonight, the transportation changes, the bike plan changes, the Parks and Rec revisions, and all of that wouldn't happen without a tremendous staff that the town has. And that's true in every case, and, you know, whether it's small or large and everything in between, your staff always puts forth the same professionalism, dedication, uh, and commitment to making sure that they put the best foot forward on behalf of the town. And you all should be proud, uh, on behalf of the town that you get to work with them, and, and really, it's a credit to the folks. I mean, you, you guys have done a great job, and, I mean, getting emails over the weekend and at night, uh, it, it's been impressive. Also, I would say, uh, Chair Roy, thank you for your service to the, to the Planning Board. You've always been, uh, fair, you've always been forthcoming, and, and I think that's what, you know, when you sit in that chair, uh, regardless of whether you're a regular serving member or the chair, as the case may be, that's what the community's looking for, is somebody who's going to be forthcoming and also is going to be fair. I will also tell you, as somebody who, uh, got term limited out of the Wake County Planning Board back in twenty twenty-three after eight years of service, while I'm sure you've loved your service, you won't regret being term limited out, I promise you. Uh, and so with that said, I'm going to hand it off to Joe Graziosi with R X R to talk on behalf of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. In the spirit of, uh, Joe Graziosi, Executive Vice President of R X R, I think many of you have met me once or twice in the now four years that I'm coming here. On December eighteenth will be my fourth year anniversary. Um, in the spirit of weather and trying to keep it short, many of you know I'm not good at short, um, but I don't have a formal presentation. I really just want to note four or five really important things. The first one is, I don't know what the heck I was thinking when I agreed to some of the stuff, by the way, that, uh, that came across here tonight, but, you know, when we started to develop this project and you see what's going on out there, I mean, we're real developers, we're making it happen. We didn't know there was going to be a Simon we're making it happen, we didn't know there was going to be a Simon George coming after me, you know, eight, nine months ago and doing a deal for a 225-acre site to build what will be the second-largest pediatric center in the country, but we didn't know that, right? And so back in July, you know, we're always thinking about changes, right? But back in July, when this actually materialized, and we stood here and announced this, and we had to go back to staff and say, "Staff, things have changed." Not things have changed a little bit, but things have changed dynamically, right? I mean, and not that it's an upside-down situation, but it's a situation where now we can really take something that, who knew? Now we know, and how can we make moves? And, you know, Jason said a few comments about your staff. I echo those comments, but I take it to the next level and say, "I'm doing this 42, 43 years. I can honestly say, across the country and a lot in the greater New York City area, I have never had such a successful relationship with a staff where it's push and pull. It was always my way or the highway, your way or the highway, and here, you have a group of people that actually truly care. They're not giving anything away," and I'll look at all of you when I say that. It's not, "Hey, Joe, come in and, you know, sell us the greatest story at the end of the day," but it's push and pull, and it's what's going to be best for this community. And a few highlights that were talked about tonight, whether, whether it be traffic, recreation, busing, et cetera. The bus terminal, right? That was a process we went through months and months and months, and we raised our hand. To Shannon's credit, sitting across the table from me and saying, "And you have to pay for it." "Well, I'll pay for it." "Well, how many money for it?" "Part and parcel to moving deals forward." Raise our hand, "We'll pay for it." When it came to the recreation, and I always want to make sure that this is clear, in the SD plan, the SD plan said that I would give you land, okay, that would fit a bunch of things, softball fields, this, that, the other thing. Didn't say I was going to build it, you'd have to raise the money, you'd have to build it, you'd have to do whatever it is due. And when we sat down with Parks and Rec, same thing, wasn't a one-day meeting, it was multiple meetings of going through this and saying, "Okay, how could be a win-win?" And Parks said, "Well, all the things we thought we needed then, a decade and a half ago, we now have, but what we really need, Joe and team, is recreation, indoor recreation space." So I said, "Fine, let's figure it out." We came up with this area that they, they pointed on the map for you, the Linear Park, and one thing that wasn't mentioned, with no disrespect, that, that's a POA. We're maintaining all that and giving you the exclusive easement to all that space to program. And so your staff isn't out there cutting the grass, pulling the weeds, or doing any of that stuff. The other thing I wanted to mention, because it was, a question was asked regarding the bike path, right? So in all of Veridia today, you have a 10-foot-wide, correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, a 10-foot-wide path, like asphalt path, along Jesse and our other roads, which are walking, biking, I don't know, pulling a stroller, whatever the case may be, where when we went down the path of bringing this children's hospital in, and all the sort of traffic and walking traffic and bicycle traffic that we're going to have, we worked, you know, with transportation and DOT, and so I too wasn't a big fan of the separation, but really, when you got in the room and you started to think about it, we didn't want it in the road, because that wasn't going to work, right? So we wanted some separation, so the sidewalk path is the furthest away from the drive lane, right, where the bike path is closest to the drive lane. So I think that, that, that that's really important, you know, that, I just point that out at the end of the day, that, how it was driven. But just lastly, in terms of the project, in terms of the community, what I thought from a personal standpoint that I would be spending, you know, maybe a day a month down here, and I got a great team that works with me, and I've been down here, I think, every week for the last four months, and the more and more time I spend here and the more and more opportunity I have to work in this town, the town of Apex, with the staff, with all the different boards and all the different council members, et cetera, I just want to say that it's truly an honor, my honor, to be able to work and partner with a group like yours and the staff that you have. And this project is, as you know, going to be talked about for decades. I mean, we were down here last week working with a film agency to do a documentary, because that's how, that's how big we think that, that, that this will be, and it will be, and we'll deliver. I'm sorry, Simon, I told Simon I was going to talk for 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brevity is not Joe's finest quality. Simon George, I oversee real estate development and facilities for NC Children's. Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, thanks for having us. Again, with inclement weather, I'll keep this brief. NC Children's continues to be so excited about coming to Apex. A little bit about the update on where we currently are. So as Joe mentioned, we are under contract on the land, we are looking to close on that land early next year. We are working on hiring an architect, we'll have the architectural partner on staff in the next several months, and then we'll be hiring a construction management company, and then we'll be looking forward to breaking ground sometime in the not-too-distant future. Thank you for hearing our item today. Again, like Joe and everyone else, I do want to thank town planning staff, Amanda, Diane, and Shannon have been phenomenal helping us get to this point. There are members of our North Carolina Children's Development Team here this evening, so along with RXR, would like to be able to answer any and all your questions. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Jason. Thank you.
And I guess I'm supposed to be brief, which is really tough for lawyers in light of the inclement weather, so I'll cruise through the zoning stuff, since you already know that and you know where, where it's going. So with respect to the changes, as was mentioned by Amanda during her presentation, associated with the overall changes, there are changes that are specific to the North Carolina Children's Campus, and then there are changes that will apply to Veridia as a whole. With respect to North Carolina Children's Campus, removing the block perimeter requirements, changing the glazing, removing the build-tos, all of those kind of relate to, and we'll talk about this in a moment, but how the children's hospital will function on this site as compared to what Veridia was originally dreamed to be. And what Veridia was originally dreamed to be was kind of this dense urban growth pattern, growth framework. Obviously, a children's hospital campus doesn't really fit well with those build-to requirements and block perimeter requirements and the things that create grids. And so as you can, as you could see here, the existing urban form conditions, you know, they don't really work with a children's hospital campus. And so those changes that you see that are in your staff report that were mentioned by, mentioned by staff are really changes that are necessary in order to, to deliver a campus-like environment. There are amendments that include exemptions from the standards that require a dense grid network, buildings located along the street, and commercial retail architecture requirements or treatments. Again, a hospital was not really something that Veridia, back in 2011, which by the way, was when it was approved, was really envisioned. With respect to kind of system-wide changes associated with Veridia, again, these are just kind of summary. We worked really closely with the Parks and Rec Department. Angela Ranky spent a lot of time on this, as did Brian Meyer in the attorney's office, kind of working through the details related to a programmable recreational facility at 25,000 square feet. It was very specific, Angela was very specific that it needed to be programmable. There will be a developer agreement that will follow this process, not sure exactly what that timeline is, that's something we're working on with the town, but it will essentially embody what Joe touched on, and that is that RXR not only will be providing the land for this 25,000-square-foot programmable recreation center, but RXR will also be building it. But the town's designing it. And so this, this indoor recreation requirement, the town previously had identified, the town's in the driver's seat with respect to meeting that requirement, meeting that need, and RXR has signed on board to say, "Okay, you design it, we'll go build it for you." As was mentioned, there's a regional bus transit location that's being provided kind of along the eastern edge of the property, near where Lennar, near where Wake Tech is, near, candidly, where kind of the pulse of the eastern portion of Veridia currently is under development, so we think it's going to have great proximity to all of the things that are going into the eastern side. It's also going to have great proximity to that rec center, given the manner in which that exhibit operates. And so with that, again, you heard from Simon, you heard from Joe, I'll keep my, I'll stop my comments here. McAdams has been providing planning and engineering associated with the site. They're here to answer any detailed questions that you might have. Otherwise, we really appreciate the time, and we would respectfully request you all's recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Are there any questions for the applicant? And at this point, I will open up a public comment for this agenda item. Anybody sign up?
I don't have anybody else signed up for the public comment.
Okay. So at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion.
Just a reminder, you need to take three separate looks.
Well, I'll kick it off with just, wow, what amazing work has gone into this with all three items, with transportation, the pedestrian, bicycle, and the rec facility. Totally agree with, with the bus and removing the light rail, something that's likely never going to happen, obviously. So I'm excited, I'm excited. I just want to start with that.
Any others?
I think it's going to be a great project, and I commend the staff and the developer for working together to try to bring about the how can we for public and private good, and I think it's a great plan, and I understand, I'm glad to see transportation still a part of it, and completely understand that the rail is, is not feasible, and not going to work, and so I'm excited about it, too.
Yeah, it's definitely years in the making, and it's good to see us adapting to those, those changes that are definitely needed as, as, you know, as we've changed through the years, so it's, it's good to see.
My two cents. Lots of changes going on, we seem, we seem to see Veridia kind of evolving with time, and I think overall, the plan seems to have changed into something better for the community, and especially with the onboarding of the hospital. Hopefully, we close on that, if that actually comes to fruition, that'd be great. I think it's well needed in the region. Just think of other things that are, would support the hospital that are local around here, that'd be great, great for the school systems as well, employment, there's a lot of, a lot of really good things moving on with that. And then obviously, with these changes, you know, sure, we need to make transportation changes, pedestrian changes, this is probably going to change again, you never know, as things move on, so we kind of expect that, and we appreciate you working with staff, and it's wonderful that everybody's getting along. Joe, welcome to the South, it's just kind of how we do business.
Happy to do it.
Okay. As far as more of it administratively, voting, I'm assuming, do we want to, if we, if there's a motion, do we first hear the motion on items six and then go back to transportation? Do you want to? Okay, so we're not going to go backwards, okay?
You have to go in order.
Okay. All right, so on item number four, we're going to go backwards here, item number four, which was the bike and pedestrian plan, do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve by Christie.
All right, have a motion by Christie. Do we have a second?
Stephen, seconds.
Stephen, seconds, okay. All those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, so item number four, Carrie. Okay, brings us to item number five, which are the amendments to the Apex Transit Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the Apex Transit Plan.
Okay, and Daniel with a motion to approve?
Well, second.
Jeff, second. All those who, all those who agree, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? All right, Carrie's. Okay. And then item number six, which is rezoning for the Veridia SD Plan amendments.
Make a motion to approve rezoning case 25 CZ18.
We have a motion by Keith.
Stephen, seconds.
We'll go with Mary, Mary, second. Okay. All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay. Item number six carries as well.
All right, we have one last item related to Veridia. Give me just a second to get this. Okay. Your next item is amendments to the Environmental Enhancement Plan. That was adopted in February 2023. And the, and EEP, for short, is defined as additional sustainability standards related to the environmental enhancement required to be submitted for approval. The standards in the adopted plan relate to building standards, environmental and natural resource protection, stormwater and surface water management, land management, and air quality protections. It's important to note that this EEP is not a standalone set of standards, but it must be used in conjunction with the approved SD plan, the pattern book, as well as the Unified Development Ordinance and other town standards. So again, like the SD Plan amendments, the amendments to this environmental enhancement plan are divided into two parts, one related to only the hospital campus and the rest that apply throughout the development. So the amendments in Part One primarily relate to energy efficiency standards that were related to the goal that we talked about in the rezoning. The standards were implemented in the environmental enhancement plan and relate to building efficiency, energy performance improvements, and the requirement that buildings be certified by, either as a LEED standard, Green Globes, Fit Well, or some similar green building standard, and providing documentation toward that, as well as the proposal was to provide exemption from the requirement of bathroom fixtures to be water sense-related and water using appliances, being Energy Star qualified as a hospital. There are standards that have to be met for the hospital and needs the hospital has for the functions that it serves, and so that is what these exemptions relate to. Are there any questions related to that? In Part Two, the changes only deal with the requirements for electric vehicle parking requirements. All the other standards remain the same. When the EEP was adopted, it was about four months before increases to our EV parking standards were, went to Town Council, and at Town Council, higher standards than were proposed by staff were, were adopted by council. And so now, in light of both the scale of parking that's going to be required for the hospital, in addition to the amount of parking that's being provided throughout the rest of Veridia, there are proposed standards that, proposed changes to the standards. So first, all uses on the North Carolina Children's Healthcare Campus, the EV charging spaces shall be provided for 0.3% of the required parking spaces and EV-ready spaces at 1.5% of the required parking spaces. There will be thousands of parking spaces for the hospital and all its ancillary uses, so there will still be a substantial number of EV parking provided. The proposal for multifamily development is to reduce the amount of EV charging spaces by 5%, but increase the amount of EV-ready by that 5%. And that is, you know, primarily related to the cost of installing all of the required The next standard modification is to set a standard for higher education uses. Our ordinance doesn't actually anticipate that yet, and so the proposal is that 1% of the required parking would be EV charging, and 1.5% would be EV-ready. Elementary, junior, and high schools would stay at the UDO standard, as is currently mentioned in the environmental enhancement plan. All other uses would be required to provide the UDO-required amount of charging spaces and 10% of the required parking as EV-ready. Generally, that's a 15%, so it's a 5% reduction in the amount of EV-ready. And finally, the developer is proposing something new. It's called EV-capable spaces, and proposal is to allow the option for anything that's required to be EV-ready to be designated as EV-capable. And the difference is, EV-ready requires all of the conduit, the equipment, and everything that is associated with an EV-charging station, with the exception of the actual charging unit. So everything that's underground, wiring, equipment, everything. They are proposing to change, to allow EV-capable, which is the raceway, the enclosed conduit that will serve the future equipment, but without the wire, circuitry, receptacles, chargers, electric panels, all that other equipment that's necessary, not knowing how long it will be in the future before Not knowing how long it will be in the future before that equipment is actually needed, it could be a situation where it's years down the road and that equipment, if installed now, would degrade. And so the staff is supportive of these proposed changes. And this is just a table comparing UDO to the proposed modification in the EEP. If that's helpful, if you have any questions, we can talk about that. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendments to the environmental enhancement plan.
Thank you, Amanda. Or are there any questions for Amanda?
I was just curious, the reduction for the, the hospitals, that just based on actually what happens at the hospital and that that's not the, how those spaces get used? Or I was just curious about that.
So it's based on the amount required. So for all uses on their campus, whatever that uses, which will be predominantly hospital-related, doctor's office.
That's what I meant, like the usage is not like downtown retail or something like that.
Right. Whatever uses they have on their campus, that will be the parking requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can agree, too. If you're, if you're trying to rough in everything for EV stations for the future and things change, what if you run certain gauge wiring and then it's not enough? You're pulling it all back out. It's just not, if you're not going to use it, why put it there? So I can understand why the town is saying, yeah. Doesn't make sense to do that now if you're not going to, not going to potentially grow into it, so.
Battery technology's changing. You may not even need charging stations like we think we need them today, so.
Yeah.
I agree.
Makes sense. Okay. So with this one here, being that it's non-public, it's just up to us. You're smiling. Looks like a motion to me.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I'll make a motion to approve the environmental enhancement plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Keith. Do we have a second?
Stephen will second.
Stephen will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay. Motion carries. And then Alyssa, we've not heard from you for a while. I think we can finally bring you back in. So we'd like, I'd like to make a motion to bring Alyssa back.
Second from Kristi.
All right, we have a second from Kristi. All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, welcome back, Alyssa. Okay, brings us to item number two. Bruce, possible motion regarding the various amendments to the UDO.
In light of the inclement weather, we are proposing to, we'd like to continue this to the January 12th Planning Board meeting.
All right, do we need to take a vote to continue?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to continue.
All right, Alyssa, we have a motion to continue this until the January meeting.
I'll second.
Jeff, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay. And then before we adjourn, I just want to say personally, I've appreciated staff and all of my colleagues here. I've had a wonderful time over the last six and a half years of being able to serve the town. I grew up in this town. I used to fish in the pond that this building is probably sitting on. If that tells you anything. So Apex has meant a lot to me. And it's great to be able to give back to my community. And I appreciate everybody's support. So thanks a lot.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Keith, a second? All right, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Make adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.